Good morning. Can everyone hear us? Very good, very good. I think we have all the commissioners on. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, our county attorney, to outline how this meeting will happen this morning, and then we'll get started. Thank you all so very much.
All right. Good morning, everybody. We're, um, we're treading on new ground, so forgive us if, if something goes a little haywire. Um, the way we're going to do the meeting, once we turn it over to the chair, is Sherry is the host of the meeting on this app, and she's going, going to mute everybody. And the reason we're doing that's not to, not to really shut anybody up, but it's to ensure that the clerk can keep a record, and we can hear people speak as they speak. So what we want to do is if you, if you would like to speak, on the bottom of your screen, on the bottom of your Zoom screen, there is a tab that says reactions. And if you would, if you want to speak, put your mouse on reactions and clap. And you see on my, hopefully on my screen, you'll see a little clap signal up. And between Sherry and I, and probably Sherry and I, and perhaps the chair can help as well, we're going to try to, that clap only lasts for a few seconds. So we're going to try to record who claps, and then the chair can recognize people, and Sherry will unmute the individual that's been recognized. So we're going to do that to, to engage in comments and discussions, rather than everybody talking, because it will only, it will only listen and transmit the audio of one of us at a time anyway. So if that makes sense, I tell you, everybody clap if that makes sense, and that way we'll know everybody's got that bit down. Clap on the screen, Mr. Barham. There's a, no, bottom right, bottom right of your screen, there's a little tab that says reactions. Put your mouse on that. You don't have one? Sherry, is it possible?
So at the bottom of the screen, where it should, everyone should have a black bar at the bottom. It's right next to chat, and then pause, stop recording, and then there should be a reactions button, button.
Unmute, Gary, let's hear what he's saying.
Okay, uh huh. Okay. He's unmuted.
All right, tell us what you're seeing, Mr. Barham.
I just see, uh, I see Sherry and Stephanie and Johnny, and, um, I see myself and you. Four people.
Commissioner Barham, if you scroll down, do you see at the bottom where it says meet, stop video, or chat?
No, I don't. It's got, it's got a little icon over here, and it's got, I can single it out, just me, and it's got a plus and minus.
Okay.
All right.
Can, so Patrick, what we're going to have to do is just visually look at people raising their hands.
Yeah, well, do one or the other, and yeah, raise your hand or push the clap, and we'll do the best we can. And what I'm going to do before Chair Wood, before you call the meeting to order, I'm just going to note who's present. And then if you'll call the meeting to order, and, and we'll walk through, just like through every other meeting, there is an agenda. You'll ask for the, you know, motion to approve the agenda. And it, and then we'll jump into the discussion of the resolution. And IT is available, one second, let me just get this. IT is available. Once we start the discussion, we're going to put up the resolution on the screen, one page at a time. So. Sherry, you want to unmute the chair?
Okay, um, just want you to know, I can only see four from the screen that I'm seeing, so I'm not able to see, I only see myself, um, our county manager, our county clerk, and Commissioner Wilson. I do not see the other commissioners from the screen that I have, and I've kind of scrolled to the left and to the right, and cannot see others, so I'm not sure how I'm going to be able to recognize, um, others, since I can't see them, even if they raise their hands.
We'll, we'll make sure, we'll make sure.
Yeah, so I'll link Sherry, I'll link Sherry to, or someone, or the clerk, whoever's got full screen to help prompt, um, because I, I do not have the viewing for everyone.
Do you have, Sarah, on the top right of your screen?
Right.
Do you have an option that says gallery view? Does it say speaker view, and maybe you can switch that to gallery view?
Gallery view would give her everyone.
Good.
Mm-hmm. I don't see that. And again, I'm working from my phone as well.
Well, it's going to look like a hamburger up at the top. It's six dots. Are you on your phone, Sherwood, or a computer?
I'm on my phone.
That may be why. Okay, but we can see everyone, so Patrick and I will let you know when someone raises their hand.
Okay, and if I need to do it on my computer, I can. I just know that there's a internet challenge here right now, so. Okay? All right, so are we ready to call the meeting to order now? Okay. Um, good mor, good afternoon, everyone. Um, this is our special Henry County Board of Commissioners special call meeting. Actually, before I begin the, uh, call the order, the meeting to order, I would like to say a prayer. And those that, um, would like to do so, please, um, join me in a word of prayer. Father God, we just thank you for this day that you have made. We thank you again, Lord God, that you have blessed and covering those families that have been impacted locally, statewide, and nationally through this, um, COVID-19. We pray also for the businesses that have been impacted, and we ask again, as we as board of commissioners come together, along with staff and others, to hear from your wisdom, and that we were joined in unity to come about with good policy that will help us get through this time of critical need. And we just say thank you for this and all things, and all that agree. Please join me in saying amen.
Amen, amen.
So at this time, uh, we were now called this special call meeting to order. The purpose again of this, uh, meeting is to, um, discuss consideration of a resolution establishing the emergency protective orders to control the spread of COVID-19. So at this time, um, I will accept the motion, um, to accept the agenda.
We have a motion, we have a motion from Commissioner Barham, and a second from Commissioner Holmes.
Okay, um, for the record, we have a motion, um, from Commissioner Barham, a second from Commissioner Holmes. Is there any discussion or comments from any commissioner at this time? Okay, if there are no hands raised, we now, um, have a first and a second motion, all in favor. Um, please raise your hands.
That is unanimous, Chair.
Okay, thank you. The agenda is now accepted as published. Again, the purpose of the day is to discuss the consideration, and before I turn this over to the, um, county manager, I would like to make a comment. The reason this board is coming together is to continue to look for the ways to prevent and slow the community spread of COVID-19, to promote the safety and protection of our citizens. And although there are many Henry County citizens and businesses that are complying with the public healthy, health recommendations and guidance, there are reports of behaviors that are still contributing, or may be contributing to the spread of COVID-19 in this community. And this Board of Commissioners is here today to consider a resolution to establish emergency protective orders to control the spread of COVID-19. I will now turn it over to our county manager for further steps into the agenda.
Sherwood, Commissioner Clemens has a question.
Okay, we'll pause. Thank you, Commissioner Clemens.
What's my question?
Oh, your hand is up.
Oh, where is it? Is it on the screen? I did that when Patrick asked me to show him that I knew how to do that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It looks like you're frozen. I do apologize. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you for that observation as well. All right, um, our county manager, I will now turn it over to you, um, Ms. Matthews.
Here again, and again, thank you, Board. Um, I'm really excited that we were able to pull this off, and, and pleased that the board is definitely practicing social distances as distancing as we receive that guidance, not only from the CDC, but also from the Department of Public Health. Um, this morning, you all will be hearing a presentation from our Emergency Management Director, uh, Mr. Don Ash, regarding some actions that the board needs to consider, specifically on physical and/or social distancing, and the regulation of some businesses here in the county, um, specifically on the number of individuals that are gathering in a particular area. Um, just as a reminder, this board did, um, institute and allow myself and our Emergency Management Director to create a COVID-19 Stakeholder Committee, which we kicked off on March 3rd of this year. And so we have been moving, um, vastly ahead in terms of making sure that we're keeping you all updated on everything that's going on. As you are aware, there are currently non-confirmed cases in Henry County, and we are continuing to have daily, um, conversations and conference calls with the Department of Public Health to provide those updates to the Board of Commissioners. You all also should be receiving situation reports from the staff, but we are at a point that we do feel like there's some additional actions that need to be taken. And as a result of calls from you all and concerns from you all, um, our county attorney did prepare a resolution for consideration. Um, Patrick may have to correct me on that, because I think it may end up being an ordinance, but I'll defer to Patrick, um, in terms of what we, what the final call should be on that. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Don Ash. He is our Emergency Manager, Management Director. And just as a reminder, our EMA Director, um, is pretty much in a role to be the liaison between not only the elected officials, but our public safety partners. Part of Don's role is to stay in tune with GEMA, FEMA, and any other, um, officials as it pertains to emergency management issues here in the county. And as a result, um, Don has reviewed the resolution, is prepared this morning to present to the board a recommendation in terms of how we will handle, um, not only businesses, but indoor recreational type activities, churches and/or religious activities, and any other uses that you all deem appropriate. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ash. Um, I've unmeeded myself, um, and Patrick, so if there are specific questions, again, you may raise your hand and/or press the reaction button, and myself and/or Pat, Patrick will acknowledge you. At this time, I'll.
Mr. Ash, before you start, I would ask IT, uh, if they would go ahead and put the resolution up on the screen. Um, and I think Mr. Ash will go through, I think what he's going to go through is going to be the first page, and then he'll probably turn it over to me to go through the next pages.
We're good to go, Sherwood. You can hear me. Everyone. Good morning. For this opportunity to speak to you guys, as you're aware, COVID-19 has been a devastating event for our country, our nation, the state of Georgia, as well as the impacts of Henry County. I just want to give you a little background. And on December of 2019, the World Health Organization did declare a pandemic global emergency as it relates to COVID-19. On March 10th, we had a presidential declaration declared by our president as a public health emergency for the United States. On March the 17th, the, the governor of Georgia declared a emerg, public emergency for COVID-19 as well. Henry County, as a part of our emergency management process and coordination with our county manager and the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, we did declare a local disaster declaration. The purpose of the disaster declaration is to let the state of Georgia know federal partners that Henry County is facing a situation that may overwhelm our resources. Since that fraction, we have seek assistance in Georgia for PP equipment to support our EMS and public safety team. The CDC, as a part of their recommendations, have strongly recommended social distancing, trying to flatten the curve of COVID-19. Um, we have implemented a lot of these things throughout our community through public education and informing our citizens. As a part of OCGA 38.3 dash 28, which is the legislation that defines emergency management, we have seen this order that we're moving forward with today. It gives us some additional resources and information that will help us. We recognize that it is important that social distancing is a key to helping control the COVID-19 to our community. We support the actions of this resolution, and we hope you guys support it too. Our goal is to make sure that Henry County remains whole, and we could recover without taxing all our resources, our hospital, our public safety, and our teams that support our community. At this time, I'll turn it over to Patrick, and he'll go into specifics.
Okay, can you hear me?
Everybody's nodding, Patrick.
Okay, so. It's the same page of resolution. I, I can't see the resolution. I think that's probably something on my end. So if y'all could switch to the second page, under the, the set, the heading that says now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved, I have listed one through, uh, nine, which are the, sort of the meat of this proposed resolution. Number one is to have the board go ahead and the entire board ratify the county's declaration of the state of local emergency. So that will just ha, be an expression of the board's ratification of the previous action the chair took. Starting at number two are the, are the specific measures that we've recommended. The first one deals with symptomatic persons. And it says that any person showing symptoms of COVID-19, as recognized by the CDC, should refrain from attending public events, entering public buildings, restaurants, shops, public transportation facilities, and all other areas where the public ingresses or egresses, or comes and goes. And we urge that person to seek proper medical attention and follow the directions of their, of their physicians. I think that goes without saying, but I think it's worth saying. Next deals with potentially exposed persons. So we've identified really two, two potentially exposed persons. First, anyone who has traveled out of the country within 30 days. And secondly, anyone who believes that he or she has been exposed to COVID-19. And we recommend that they should likewise refrain from attending public vent, events, or entering public buildings, and doing any of the other things. They should simply act as if they've got it, and they should also seek medical attention as is necessary. Next deals with indoor recreation facilities, and what we've, what we intend by indoor recreation facilities would be gyms, entertainment facilities, things like, uh, movie theaters, or, uh, you know, bounce houses, um, things like that. Places where people, just by nature of the activity, will come into contact with one another. And we said, we are recommending that those should close. There's simply no way for a gym to operate. There's no safe way right now to do to operate. There's no safe place probably for a lot of those types of facilities to operate. I think most of them are closed already, but we're joining in the, the, we're, we're joining those facilities in with the other types of facilities that we think are likely to transmit the, the virus. Next is the one that will have the most impact on people, which deals with eating establishments and bars. What we're calling for is that all eating establishments, bars, and night clothes, nightclubs, close for in-person dining or in-person operations. Those that are able to should instead provide their services by drive-through pickup or delivery. So the hope is restaurants will close for indoor service and rely exclusively on delivery, takeout, and drive-through. That resolution, or that, that prohibition under Section 5B would not apply to cafeterias located within medical, industrial, government, or other production facilities that are performing essential functions necessary to promote health, welfare, and vital resources in Henry County. Uh, we do encourage tho, if there are any of those types of facilities in the county, that they stagger their meal times, and they likewise follow CDC protocols with respect to cleaning surfaces and cooking surfaces. And what we mean by these types of facilities is if there is obviously the hospital, the hospital has a cafeteria. We're not going to order the cafeteria to be closed, because they probably need that cafeteria to continue their operations. I don't know how the hospital cafeteria is operating, but we don't want them to close. Likewise, if there's a facility in the county that's producing, I don't know that there is, but if there's a facility in the county that's producing um, food, if there's a facility in the county that's producing drugs needed to treat COVID. If there's a facility, we, and if they have a indoor, in, an inside cafeteria, we're not ordering that to close. We don't want to hinder the operations of those types of facilities. Next, we have a, a sort of a catch-all for other businesses. These other businesses are those businesses that by the nature of the service they provide, people are in close physical contact with one another. And of immediate thought were things like massage parlors, nail salons, and hair salons. Uh, it's, it's simply impossible for those types of businesses to operate without people getting within six feet of each other. I don't think you can get a haircut unless the person cutting your hair is, is up close. I don't think you can get your nails done unless you're within, within six feet. I, I don't know how you get a massage if you're not within six feet. So we're ordering those types of facilities to close. We address houses of worship, houses of worship would be, which would be churches and related facilities. We're not ordering them closed. We are instead urging that they look for a way to the dense individuals in their building. Broadcast services, or they had, and if they had live serve by an appropriate amount. And we're also encouraging that, and we're urging that grave site services be limited to 10 or fewer per, participants. Next, number eight, deals with the general principle of physical distancing. That, it's also been called social distancing. And we've heard it over and over and over again that it is necessary and appropriate to keep a physical distance from one another. Minimum of six feet, and we should encourage, we should avoid crowds of greater than 10 people. Lastly, this duration, the duration of this resolution would be proposed to stay in effect until April 7th, which is the date of the next board meeting. And at that time, the board can consider whether to keep these restrictions in place, to modify them, or to actually, um, adopt penalty provisions, which you'll notice are absent from this resolution. We're not looking to penalize people. We're looking to guide people towards, towards proper protocols and looking for to help that stop the spread of the virus. So it's, this is open for the board for discussion. It's open for the board for revision, and, um, I think now would be a good time to turn it over. And Sherry, perhaps you would weigh in if you would prefer the screen to stay up, or do you want the, do you want the screen to be more visible for the people involved?
Does all the commissioners have a copy of the resolution?
It didn't show up on my screen, and I, uh, went back on my phone and started catching up.
Does everyone else have a copy that you can be if we were to downsize the actual resolution, or do you want to keep it up? And everyone is unmuted, so you can say yes or no.
I have a copy.
I'm good.
I have a copy.
I'm good.
Okay. So we can go back to the, perfect. Thank you.
And, and, um, Ms. Matthews, there is a little echo, um, in the speech. I don't know if anyone else was experiencing that, and at least in some parts when the county attorney was speaking, but just FYI, it sounds a little echoish, so I'm sure we'll work through it, but I was able to pick up through it, but you read through it, it's because I had.
Okay, fair enough. What I will do is mute everybody's speaker again, because I think that's where we're picking up the balance, so give me one second.
Sherwood, Commissioner Holmes has a question.
Okay, um, the floor is now open for questions from the board, and we'll recognize Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you. Um, I've been getting a lot of, uh, phone calls and emails from, uh, business owners around the county, actually around Metro Atlanta regarding, um, what we're going to do, um, for them, especially the ones that, um, have to close down, uh, in the county. Is there anything that, um, uh, we can put in place to ensure that, um, they're okay after this whole episode is over with?
Okay, we've heard the question from Commissioner Holmes, and I'll, um, uh, just, uh, return that request back to the, um, uh, county attorney, especially and the county manager.
We need to be working on, I think there's going to be a lot of people hurt by this, a lot of business that's, they're going to suffer, whether we impose these restrictions or not. Um, I think I indicated in an email yesterday, I don't have suggestions for that at the moment, but I do think the conversation that perhaps your management team will immerse with the Development Authority, um, on a more individual basis, uh, more, more so directed towards individuals, maybe with the CDBG program, or even the NSP program, to see what might be available to help both local businesses and individuals who suffer catastrophic financial consequences from this whole thing. There, there are a few things which I will be bringing to you over the next several days, and probably for consideration on April 7th, regarding what we can do. Um, you'll be seeing a resolution soon where we, we ask the Board of Commissioners to waive penalties and interest for late tax payments. Um, you'll see, you'll, you will possibly see some other measures that are smaller and that are really smaller, but the, the kind of things that might help get us out of the way of the recovery. We don't really have the ability financially or legally to, to offer money to people, but we might be able to help facilitate something like that.
Sheriff Wood, Commissioner Holmes has his hand up again.
Sorry about that. Um, the, um, I guess Congress just passed a, um, SBA Economic Injury Disaster, um, uh, Legislation, and is there a possibility that, um, we as a county can work together with the federal government to ensure that businesses in, um, in and around Henry County are okay?
Well, I would like to, uh, take a moment to respond to that. Um, I, I do encourage all of us as elected officials to definitely reach out to our federal government and our legislators, as we've been doing already. I know many of us have already made some phone calls, but to guarantee what that will look like, um, I agree with you, we need to at least get, I will definitely, uh, work with whoever wants to work with me as a board and representative to, um, get a specific contact with the Small Business Association, so that we can streamline and identify some specific assistance to our businesses here. So I would welcome anyone to, um, to, to join me, and I will also take a lead to do that.
And Commissioner Holmes, just to follow up to your, um, initial question regarding the small businesses, we here at the staff level are also revisiting our county budget, because if those businesses aren't bringing in revenue, that's definitely going to impact some of the recommendations that we've made within our respective budgets. So we're on it, um, be on the lookout in the coming days for some amended recommendations from staff as it pertains to the initial budget that we presented to the board, um, because we are definitely watching specifically our SPOSS program, where we are, um, uh, we're getting ready to start collecting our first penny for SPOSS 5, although we'll collect it in April, we'll get that first check in May. And I will tell you, our Financial Services Director has definitely. And I will tell you, our financial services director has definitely expressed some concerns in terms of what that will look like. Um, hotel motel taxes as well. So we're definitely looking at all of our options, but certainly will be um, making sure that if there are opportunities available, that we can have funding that's allocated to Henry County, that we're on top of that as well. Um, Sheriff Wood, Commissioner Clemens has raised her hand.
Okay, um, let me make sure Commissioner Holmes, is that taking care of all of your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm not, I would also say as we go to Commissioner um, Clemens, that we need to partner with a, a local chamber of commerce to also see if there's opportunities there as well. Um, I direct that to our county manager. Okay, um, Commissioner Clemens, you now have the floor.
I have a question uh, for um, Patrick in reference to the um, the um, hold on a second, in reference to the um, resolution that we just did. I don't have the copy in my email of the new one that added the hair salons and all that stuff in it. Um, can you give me specifics on that? And are they limited to two people at a time, one person at a time, or are they to just shut down? And when are they shutting down? Because I didn't know that we were addressing the hair salons. I mean, they need to be addressed, but I just didn't know how you had put that in there.
Right, well, we, we, I sent it, I sent it out by email last night and I think we sent it again this morning. So I will read it in its entirety and then we can talk about some of the details. Massage parlors, nail salons, hair salons and other similar facility, any facility used for an activity that involves prolonged physical proximity of individuals, grooming or general health and wellbeing purposes shall close and remain closed for the duration of this emergency. Now, we did not, we did not address the number of people and the reason is, and this might be something that Mr. Ash can help me about, help me with, but the reason is that, you know, obviously there's larger stores where, you know, grocery stores where there may be 50 people in the grocery store, but they can stay apart. You, you can, you can go to, to the grocery store and not get
Right.
It is impossible to get your hair done without your stylist. That's right, that, your stylist will be right in your face. And that's just the nature of that business and likewise with nail salons and massages. Um, I, I think, look, this is up to you. It's up to the board to adopt whatever measures it's, it thinks are appropriate. I put that in there and I, I get it. This, uh, this is a fairly extreme um, solution suggesting people shut businesses down and, but I, I didn't want to be the one to make the judgment call about how to balance that. So I just put in what I felt was probably the appropriate medical response. I'm not a doctor, but I think any of us know that's probably the appropriate medical response. So.
And, and that's, and that's fine. I just needed to understand because I didn't have a copy of that. But also, uh, we need to make sure that our um, magistrate court is on top of the order um, of those evictions, because what happens is, you know, Commissioner Holmes just said, we've got to have some relief for these people or they're going to be facing evictions, um, you know, come May when they can't pay their April rent because they've had to shut down for two, three weeks or, you know, however long they've been closed. So um, um, I know that we, we need to just make sure that we're right up on top of that and making sure that after we do the resolution today, that we aggressively um, pursuing uh, getting magistrate court to do that order to help with the evictions.
I, I agree and, and I'll fill in what that's about for anybody who's not familiar. The, the question came about what the county can do, if anything, to, to halt evictions during this time. And the short answer to that is the county government does not have authority to intervene in, in these private evictions. But as a practical matter, the, the Georgia Supreme Court has issued a judicial emergency, an order declaring a judicial emergency. And the practical result of that order is that in, in the mag, in the chief magistrate's words, for all practical purposes, there is a moratorium. It's not really a moratorium, but the way the courts function, that it is, i- it's going to be impossible for them to process a dispossession or an eviction action. And it's, and I don't think you're going to see the sheriff executing any of those that may be issued right now. So I, I think I will follow up with the chief magistrate today and I'll send a report out to the board and just see where the status of that is.
And Patrick, for me, I understand the federal mandate, but I want the, our citizens, our constituents, our business owners.
Sure. And, and so people understand that the federal government did issue a moratorium on both foreclosures and evictions and the state government has done the same thing. But those apply to government-owned and government-owned properties. So HUD is prohibited from evicting anybody. And banks are prohibited from foreclosing on federally insured mortgages right now. So those are, those were things that the, that government entity actually controls. We don't own any rental properties. That, well, that's not true. We have a few rental properties. The, this, this board does have authority over those, but we don't have authority over the rental properties between private individuals. But I will, I will absolutely contact Judge Jones today and, and talk about it a little more fully with him. And make sure this board is informed of exactly where they stand and.
And, and, and so that the rest of the board understand why, you know, this is important. Um, like if someone, if the landlord, the owner of the building where Mike's Pizza, that for an example, that's not a place, so I'll use that name. If Mike's Pizza is renting from a landlord and the landlord has a bank mortgage, then the landlord gets a break from the bank mortgage, but he doesn't give the tenant, Mike Pizza, who pays business taxes to the county a break. And then he gets to be evicted where Mike, where the landlord got a break. So this is for those small business owners that have, you know, kept the county going and that are here in the county, live in the county. I think we just have to make sure that we have something in place where, you know, their, their case is heard in court and they don't just get evicted because the county has shut them down for a couple of weeks. So I just wanted the rest of the board to know what, you know, why we need that. And I don't want people to say, well, it's already in place from a federal government. It's not in place for the tenants.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so Commissioner Clemens.
Sorry, Commissioner, I just wanted to make you aware, Commissioner Thomas has raised her hand as well.
Okay, um, Commissioner Clemens, any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be looking for that, Patrick.
Yep.
Sheriff Wood, that will be followed by um, Commissioner Wilson. So we have Commissioner Thomas, then Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Thomas, you now have the floor.
Clemens was alluding to how can we help the small businesses maintain their ability to function in the county? Because we are very dependent upon the taxes that they supply to this county to operate. So that's very, very important. I noticed Patrick stated that even the federal government mandate of supporting small businesses pertain only to properties that are owned by the government and does not talk about um, the private industry where the private industry owns different rental properties. I want him to clarify that. Because one of the questions I am very concerned about, I've received calls about already, that there are homeowners that are renting homes from private individuals. There are two scenarios. One where eviction started in January and they were supposed to be evicted in March, meaning that they started the eviction processes in January. It takes about three months to get through the court system. And now the tenants are now using the COVID uh, crisis to extend that process. What do they do? I didn't have an answer for that. The second part is Patrick simply stated that the eviction process is only applicable to when the government industry owns the property and not when it's owned by a private individual. So if someone is in a home now, Patrick, and it's owned by a private individual, are you saying that that private individual can still start the process of eviction of that homeowner? Am I hearing you correct? I just need clarification.
So all things equal, yes, I'm going to work backwards. Your second question about private, private landlord-tenant relationships, unless there is something in the lease or unless the, the relationship is somehow um, limited by, you know, maybe federal housing assistance or state housing assistance, it is likely that, that it, well, the county has no authority to intervene to stop that.
What about the state? When you say county, I hear you said a county. But also answer for the state, because there are certain people may think they are protected by the state and they're not. We need to make sure we give out good information. I do at least.
Right, so, so to, as of today, the state government has not imposed any limitation or restriction on landlord's ability to evict tenants. However, the courts are basically limiting what they do. So as a practical matter, a landlord can file a petition to evict a tenant. However, the, the deadlines that would normally be in place, I think in, in the magistrate court on an eviction, the tenant has to answer within seven days. And then there's a hearing soon thereafter. Those deadlines have been extended by the, by the Georgia Supreme Court. So if a new eviction is filed, that deadline, that eviction is going to, is not going to happen while that judicial emergency is in place. When the judicial emergency is lifted, it will proceed. Now, with respect to evictions that took place, that were filed months ago and the parties are simply waiting on an order to be issued or waiting on the sheriff to execute an order, I don't think that the Supreme Court's order necessarily delays those. But I, I, I don't know enough about those individ, any individual case. And I, I want to preface what I say is I'm not a landlord.
Patrick, you faded out, so I didn't hear the last part of that.
So there could be something involved in, something involved, that's what I'm not aware of. But as a general rule, so simply because I don't practice in the landlord-tenant arena, I don't know if there's something hidden away in landlord-tenant law that might offer some other protection. I don't believe there is. But certainly every, every lease is its own contract, so people should, people in doubt about their rights under a lease should immediately get their lease and read it. And, and should probably if they're in, if they're in jeopardy of not being able to make their rent payments, they probably should go ahead and contact an attorney upfront to make sure that they're going to be protected. But I think for the most part, and I will confirm exactly what's going on today in magistrate court and make sure we get something back to you.
Patrick, I'm, I'm going to need something. I have quite a few. He's going in and out. Patrick, I am going to need something. I have quite a few apartments in my district and I have people contacting me about their leases and telling them to go back and look at their lease is not going to work. It just won't work.
Right.
Um, telling them, hold on, let me finish. And telling them that we do not uh, know um, the laws between the tenant and the apartments, that's not going to work. We need to get an answer out here to say, if you are renting, be it an apartment or a house, based upon what da-da-da-da, this is what you can expect to happen. And we need to be to give them that direct answer and not dance around it, okay? Because this is going to affect them directly. There are one scenario, the scenario need to be answered. If your eviction started in January, it will continue or not continue. They need to know that. If your eviction started in February, if your eviction started after such-and-such-and-so date in the COVID crisis, there are extended time periods to get such-and-such-and-so through the court system. But I need direct answers and I don't want to go on wishing around it. It can be, it can be. Get us some answers, Patrick, because I have people calling me, please. I mean, I don't, I don't need to, not now, but I'm saying, when you get off this call or whatever it takes, whoever we need to call who participates in the tenant landlord laws, get us some direct answers so that I can give my constituents answers. They don't have them. And they are very, very concerned. Will I be able to stay in my apartment or not? Am I going to be evicted out? Will I be in the streets or not? So please help us get direct answers is what I'm asking of you.
So I, I need to warn you, there are some answers neither I nor any other lawyer can give that will apply to everybody. Because everyone's relationship with their landlord is dependent upon the specific terms of their lease. There may be leases that say, in fact, a lot of residential leases don't require the court to intervene to evict the tenant. So I, I can't give an answer that will apply universally as to what a tenant's rights are, because those.
I, I understand that.
So, but we can, we can provide some guidance about some of the general principles of eviction of landlord-tenant of the process and the court's role. So I can provide some of that. But everybody, people are just going to need to understand that their specific, their specific circumstances, I, I can't review. And I can't review people's leases, you know, I, I, I can't.
I'm not asking that. Remember, I am not asking you to review people's leases, but there are some canalities that we are going to have to address. There are people thinking, I do not have to pay for April because of the crisis. Oh, I'm gonna skip April's month payment because they say they can't evict us. We need to change our cultural thinking about processes. And if we don't set a tone for that, we're hurting the county because we didn't take a stand to educate our constituents on what could possibly happen. So we need to give them, if your eviction started in January, that tenant has the right to continue that eviction and you will be set out. That needs to be stated if it started in January. If your eviction started in February, there are some things that we can say that are true. You are required, if possible, to pay your rent in April. If you do not and your lease does not protect you, that, that owner has the right to do. There are some things that we can say that are legal and I need you to find them so I can tell tenants what to expect. I have some churches that are concerned.
And, and what I, I. Oh, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Thank you, county attorney. So what I'm hearing is that um, Commissioner Thomas has clearly made um, the request um, to get some clarification regarding evictions and even if we cannot have um, some specifics, um, our county attorney is going to get with our magistrate court and provide something back to the board as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so um, Commissioner Thomas, um, I think you um, uh, you had another question about homeowner renting homes from private. And I guess is that tied also to the, the uh, request to the evictions? Is you want to make sure that he speaks to that or?
I think they all tie together. I just need to be able to give good, solid answers to constituents who are calling. The other thing is too, he named the hair salons, he named the nail salons. And I, I don't have a problem with him doing that, but I wrote down, okay, you can, if you start naming them specifically like that, I have a concern about body piercing. I have a concern about tattooing. Um, I have a concern about um, oh, I don't know what they call this. Well, I'm gonna get into it. But anyway, what we call the quasi-medical world, how do we categorize them? I'm basically is what, what I'm asking.
Exactly what you're doing. Tell me other types of businesses that you think of and I can add those. Um, and I think that's, I think that's a great point, body piercing, tattooing. Uh, I, I think those are very similar and perhaps even worse, not worse, but maybe even more likely to transmit disease. I will certainly, I think those should be added. I, I don't know if there's, you know, I've got the catch-all of, of any activity that involves prolonged physical proximity. I think it would make sense at this point to add body piercing, tattooing. And any others that we can think of, if, if anybody else has any ideas.
Okay, is there, your, does your general statement, I think that all already states um, that um, it says um, any other uh, businesses or um, services that require close, you know, duration and so forth, does that not um, uh, cover those items that we're trying to address regarding services that are within the six feet different distance that we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think it does.
When we start naming the businesses, those are the type that came to mind as how we would address them as well. That's all.
Okay, thanks.
And I think Commissioner Thomas.
Yes, go ahead, county attorney.
I think it's a good point. If, it's a good point. If we're going to list businesses, then list, list. then list, list all of them that we can think of right now. And I think it would be good to, to amend the resolution to include body piercing and tattoo studios.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, I think was next, correct?
That's correct, and then you have Commissioner Holmes.
Okay, and then I would like to make a comment as well. Okay, after Commissioner Holmes. So Commissioner Wilson, you now have the floor.
Okay, Patrick, in other businesses like Commissioner Thomas just mentioned, you have all non-essential businesses to be closed. And that way, that, we, we're not leaving anybody out. So in how we define that, I, I don't know. Non-essential business to be closed, and it comes, the purpose is to, especially on top of that, we could, how we enforce that, I don't know. But there's a couple of things that we need to look at, add to the resolution is to, is honestly, maybe a curfew put on top of that. But that's, uh, get it to include in this resolution as well.
Okay, I didn't hear Commissioner.
Yeah, let me tell you.
Can someone repeat Commissioner Wilson's last statement because it faded out, so I didn't hear it clearly?
Commissioner Wilson, can you repeat your last statement? It faded out.
I'd like to consider putting them in the resolution as well.
And, and could you explain who you're referring to, Commissioner Wilson?
Business, all non-essential businesses.
All non-essential businesses. Thank you.
Absolutely. And maybe include a curfew as well.
So Commissioner Wilson mentioned a curfew and including all non-essential businesses.
So if I could, I'd like to address why I didn't include both of those in this resolution. And obviously, we'll, we'll amend it however the board sees fit. I didn't include a curfew because I don't see any reason to believe that it is more likely to spread the COVID virus at two in the morning than it is to spread it at two in the afternoon. I don't know how a curfew prohibiting people to be outside between nine and, you know, nine PM and five AM or something along those lines would, would do anything to help defeat the spread of the virus. I, I, I think that's, I think there could become a time when a curfew may be necessary, but you know, we ought to adopt, we, we need to be balancing the individual's right to some level of freedom with our need to impose measures. And I don't, I, I personally don't know how a curfew will help stop the spread of the virus. Um, the reason I didn't include non-essential businesses as a, just a catch-all for all businesses is there are a lot of businesses that are, um, that are, that simply probably don't have a great likelihood of spreading, spreading the virus, you know, landscapers. I don't know if a landscaper's business is really going to be likely to spread a virus. And I don't know if you can classify landscaper as non-essential or not. Um, you know, if I'm a, my office is closed, at least we've given everybody the option to work from home. But my office, generally, everybody sits at their computer station, they work, and there's not a lot of people coming and going. Um, so we, by virtue of the design of the office, we are socially distant. Um, I, I think there's a lot of businesses that don't, that simply don't have attached to it a significant risk of transmitting the disease. You know, and the, and another thing I, I will mention is but for a couple of the really larger metropolitan cities, Atlanta has imposed a shelter in place. I think Athens has imposed one. What you're proposing would basically be a shelter-in-place type, uh, res- response, which, which might just be too much. And that may be such a, such a drastic measure that you may not get public support. And I think that's what you have to balance is our innate desire to be free against what is necessary at this moment. But I, I, look, I'll draft, I'll, I'll write whatever resolution this board directs.
And I think Commissioner Wilson, I mean Commissioner Holmes is raising his hand as a question.
Yeah, I've got Commissioner Holmes. So Commissioner Wilson, anything else?
Not this time, thank you.
Okay, we're going to Commissioner Holmes, and then we'll come to me, and then we'll continue. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, you now have the mic.
And Chair, we have Commissioner Barm that's raising his hand as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holmes, you have the mic.
Just want to piggyback on, uh, Commissioner Wilson's comments regarding essential versus non-essential. I think, um, specifically naming, uh, particular businesses in a resolution, I think that may be going too far. I mean, you've mentioned, uh, beauty salons, but there are beauty salons where there's just one hairstylist in there. You know, so I don't, so, so I think that, um, we can get caught in a situation where we're discriminating, um, between businesses. So if there is any possibility you can write the resolution that kind of keeps it big, to kind of keep us out of trouble, um, in terms of discriminating, uh, between who can be open and who can't be open, I think that may be the, um, best way to go.
Okay, um, County Attorney, you have any response to that?
Yes, so the best way to, to ensure that our, or in our resolution, our action would withstand challenge would be to focus on the harm we're trying to prevent. The harm we're trying to prevent is the spread of the COVID virus. And the resolution I drafted was drafted in a way to track with the guidance and recommendations that have come down, both from the federal government, the state government, the CDC, and the health departments. Uh, none of them have recommended that all businesses be closed. They have recommended that you take measures to ensure that you maintain that appropriate physical distance. And they have, uh, suggested, I believe the CDC has suggested, and Don may, Mr. Ash may be able to help me with this, but I believe the CDC and other public health organizations have made recommendations about restaurants and, and dining in service. So I think, I think the best way to approach this is to take the minimal step necessary to solve the harm we're trying to solve, which are those businesses by nature of what they do are more likely to spread the, spread the virus. A global shutdown of all businesses would, would impose restrictions upon people that aren't contributing to the problem. And that's where I have a little bit of concern.
Okay, I'm done. Okay, um, Commissioner Holmes, anything further?
I think that's it.
Okay, uh, my, my comments are, um, I, 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 I am not interested in a curfew at this time. Um, again, what we are trying to do, first of all, we need to thank those citizens and businesses who are practicing the physical distance. Um, and this is again, these measures to help us move to the next level to stop the spread or even to prevent the COVID-19 where possible. And I do believe that our citizens, especially our small businesses, we've got to continue to focus, um, on how can we support them. And I think a curfew would add even more negative impact to the small businesses. So at this time, I am not interested in that, especially if everyone will practice the social distancing and the physical distancing. The other thing is, um, and I'm gonna direct this one to the county attorney. Um, I think it is implied, but I think it needs to be clear. Um, what I, I, I do get concerned about, um, is the grocery stores. Um, I see that as an essential service that is needed, um, so that individuals can purchase, you know, what is needed for their families. But I do get concerned of whether or not this will be clear enough of emphasizing the, the, the physical distancing requirement. So that is one thing I think if can be clarified more, um, for the grocery stores or any other business that may be open. And again, if it's, it's just not as clear to me, so I would, no, um, County Attorney, Mr. Jockstetter, do you have any response to that?
So, I, I think what you're suggesting, it would be perhaps another section under physical distancing that would say something along the line of, of all businesses shall enact measures to ensure that their employees, customers and clients practice appropriate, physical distancing.
Yes.
Something like that. I think I did, that might be a pretty good sentence to add.
Yeah, uh, that, that was, I leave the request, and I think I'm getting some feedback. So, um, I, I, I think I heard everything that you said, is that we enact maybe a, a, another segment um, to, um, request businesses and, um, employees and their, um, customers to practice the social distancing, something like that. Okay. Okay, all right, that, that was my, okay, so that was my only thought, and I understand now that Commissioner Barm is next. Okay, well, are you all getting the same feedback I'm getting?
Yeah.
Uh, I heard next is Commissioner Barm. So Commissioner Barm, you now have the mic.
Thank you, Chair. And I didn't know if any of y'all had seen the Atlanta Journal today, uh, with Michael Thurman in Cab County imposed, they kind of following kind of the same guidelines the, uh, governor put out yesterday that allows, uh, no more gathering of ten or more people. And he also put in his scenario, uh, uh, some of the businesses like bowling, fitness centers, nail salons, and, and personal grooming facilities. But they had to fall within that threshold of the ten, uh, people, so ten people or less. And like, uh, Commissioner Holmes said, you have some hairstylists out there, maybe work out the house. So maybe by themselves, have one person come in at a time, stuff. And, uh, I don't know if we might want to look at maybe, uh, following some of the state guidelines on this. And I do agree that, and Michael Thurman and them, they also, uh, put out a thing that, that the, uh, restaurants had to have that put up on. Uh, but when you start identifying this business or that business, or this business or that business, we gonna miss something. And, uh, kind of like the idea, if we gonna really put something out there, is go with the, uh, non-essential businesses. And then that would limit everything, but my, my, I know that's what Starbridge did this morning. I have not had, uh, time to review what they actually did. But, uh, it would be nice if we could kind of come together with Henry County and put something together that we all agree on. So we make this a county guideline instead of Henry County having one policy, and Starbridge has one policy, and McDonald has another policy. I would like to see us come to something that we could all agree on, so we collectively have the same policy. And, uh, my next question would be, is how are we gonna enforce this? I'd like to hear from, uh, our county manager. So whatever we do put in place, how are we gonna enforce this? Is it gonna be fine? Are we gonna put people in jail? I mean, what are we gonna do?
Okay, um, County, County Manager, if you can mute everybody else out and speak, maybe that'll help with the feedback.
Nothing. It's terrible. It's.
Yeah, so, so if you would, um, kind of mute out everyone, um, Ms. Matthews, and unmute you and, uh, Commissioner Barm, maybe that'll help. But yeah, it's really ragged right now.
So can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I think I can probably help answer this and share your way or, or something if it, if it's problematic. So I think the purpose of this current resolution is not really to create an enforcement mechanism. The purpose of this is to try to provide guidance and help guide businesses and individuals into, into sort of a self-compliance. Um, the reason I put that April seventh deadline was really twofold. Number one, you know, I think we're all optimistic and we're hopeful maybe this resolves itself by, uh, April seventh, then we can lift all these restrictions. But the more realistic, um, outlook is probably that this will continue. And perhaps on April seventh, if we're still observing individuals and businesses that aren't complying, at that point, add in some enforcement mechanisms and add in some penalties. Now, I'll, I'll tell you right now, you do not want to put people in jail over this. It, you know, if this gets into a jail, COVID gets into a jail, i- it is impossible to stop the spread of something like this in a jail. And I don't think the sheriff would accept people into the jail for these types of violations at this point. But it might be appropriate, if we're unable to sort of help guide people into compliance, for a step two, to have some penalties and some real enforcement teeth. I think right now what our plan is, and, and county management tell me if I get this wrong, it would be to task code enforcement and the police department perhaps to, when they observe or they receive complaints, they can appear, show these guidelines, maybe have some other handouts or guidelines and try to convince people they need to do what's right. Now, obviously, if somebody acts inappropriately, that, you know, maybe they, they violate some other law. But I don't think right now we want to jump in and, and have a giant enforcement mechanism. This isn't intended to be a hammer. It's more of a carrot and a stick. We, we want to guide people into compliance.
Commissioner, okay, Commissioner, um, Barm made a statement about how this county and the cities could actually have the same policy. Um, just want, um, everyone to know that we are having, um, daily calls with the, um, cities. Well, we, meaning, um, myself, the county manager, the EMA director, um, is actually, um, having everyday updates. Um, hoping that we can align where possible. Uh, but again, each city has their own jurisdiction, as the county does as well. And hopefully, where it makes sense, we do align. So just do know that communication is continuing um, to, to helpfully align these policies where possible. Okay, um, County Manager, you said, Commissioner Barm, you had any others thoughts before we go to our next commissioner?
Well, I'd just like to get some other feedback on what the other commissioners think about trying to have a policy that's county-wide and work with all the cities on that versus us having a separate thing and.
Can you all hear me okay? Because you sound like Charlie Brown share. Okay, well, I can't hear you if everybody else can hear me. The first policy that we had, um, Patrick, that just talked about gyms and, um, recreation facilities, I thought was good. But now that we're adding all this other stuff, I think that we're singling out, um, businesses that could be essential to some and not essential to others. And I think we're gonna have a whole nother issue with that. I think if we just say non-essential businesses, even though I understand your reason for not saying that, it's kind of a blanket thing. People can decide if they think their business is essential or not essential. People can decide if going to a hair salon because it's a medical situation that they need to go, or going to a nail salon because it's a medical situation. And if we say non-essential, I think it covers everything and it's not singling out specific businesses. I cannot agree to putting specific businesses' names in. I can agree to non-essential and then saying all other businesses should make sure that if they are open, that they are practicing, you know, safe measures according to CDC and the six feet distance. And then if we, and then if we see people doing that, then we can address those by sending out code enforcement or sending out somebody from the health department to talk to them. And we can address that on the seventh. I think that right now, today, we should only deal with large restaurants and bars with people that have, that, uh, organizations and companies that are over fifty people, that are having people inside. I'm, I think that's safe, since we're gonna address it again in less than two weeks. I think that we need to be safe and to stir up, you know, a whole havoc of community, shutting down these small businesses. Um, and I, and I'm telling you, I, it's, I have a huge issue with identified things that a man may not see as essential, that a woman does see as essential. Because I can go into a hair salon, and my hair salon stylist has already said, I'm only taking one customer at a time. Um, you know, she's not sick, so why can't she come to work? Just like the attorney can go to his office.
Right, and the way we can achieve that is, um, paragraph number. Right. And the way we can achieve that is paragraph number six, other businesses, we could just strike that in its entirety. And that would basically put us back to where you were.
I agree. I agree.
And that's an easy fix. I can do that right now.
And then that's staying in guideline with what the governor has done as well. So, you know, let's just do that. Let's see, because our community has done really well. Even before we've done this, the restaurants are already doing what they were supposed to be doing. Most of them. I would say 90%. So I think that we continue to trust the community. We put something in place to make sure that they know that they have to go curbside. But I don't think we list those businesses. So I agree with you. If we could just scratch that, that one, we should be okay.
So if y'all will bear with me for a moment, I'm going to make that change. And I will send it to Mr. Floyd. And he can put it up on the screen just showing that one, showing that one section.
Just remove.
Yeah.
While Patrick's doing that, can you all hear me better from this computer?
Yes. And I would all, Commissioner Clemens still has the floor. Anything else, Commissioner Clemens?
And that first paragraph, the one that we had on yesterday, Patrick still addressed the gyms. Because it addressed those places that people were sweating and that kind of thing.
That's the indoor recreation. You want to leave that?
Yeah, that first part that we had yesterday was great.
Yeah, that's paragraph number four. That will remain in. I'm going to send this right now. And I'm saying it out loud so they know it's on the way. I'm going to email this right now. They can put it up on the screen.
And to Commissioner's bomb point, Commissioner Barn taking out that section six would put us in line with everything that the cities have done. Because they basically followed the governor's plan.
Okay.
Commissioner Bar, let us unmute you. Give us one second. Let me unmute it. I'm working off two computers. So give me one second.
Okay. Well, let me make sure Commissioner Clemens still has the floor. And I had something for, I hope Patrick includes that statement that I had made recommendation to, but I want to make sure we've taken care of everything.
What was that, Chair Wood?
I had requested the statement that especially for the businesses where there are crowds such as grocery stores that they best they can impose that speed for their employees and their customers.
Yeah, we don't say grocery stores. We just mentioned about that, right, Commissioner?
Yeah, we just add other businesses. However, that's why I wanted to see what the county attorney is putting in there so we can make sure the language is right.
And actually, Commissioner Chair Wood, that will cover all of that too. And I'm glad you said that because that kind of bundles all of them in one as well.
Yes. Okay. Now, okay, anything else, Commissioner Clemens?
And so that takes care. And Patrick, I'm sure if we put the 10 people or less that would take care of these nail salons that we're seeing packed with 50 people in them, because they can't have that many in them at a time if we put, you know, making sure that it's in the policy that no businesses should have more than 10 people at a time where they can safely practice six feet apart. And I was just waiting on Commissioner Barn. I said that if we do that, fix that number six, Commissioner Barn, we were kind of in line with everything else that the cities did.
Chair Wood, I think Commissioner Barn has a follow-up response to Commissioner Clemens.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, anything else before we go to Commissioner Barn?
And then don't forget, we have Commissioner Thomas that's been waiting.
Okay. So Commissioner Barn, you're next. And then after that, Commissioner Thomas. Okay, Commissioner Barn, you now have the mic.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Commissioner Clemens. And this will put us in line with the state. The state's already issued those regulations out there. And it gets these restaurants closed. They do takeout only. And, you know, we may have to do something else further on down the road. And we can do that within 24 hours. So I think this is a good start. And like Commissioner Clemens says, this puts us in line with what Stockbridge did. And hopefully we get the other cities on board as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
That's all.
So Chair, if I could, I'm going to read to you and I'm going to send this to IT as well. The two changes to the resolution that we put up earlier. First thing I did was I deleted number six in its entirety. Now, I'm not going to read, I'm not going to redo the numbering. So the numbering is going to look a little weird. But I'm actually going to show you a version with what I removed to be struck out. So I struck out the section that said massage parlors, nail salons, hair salons, et cetera. That's out altogether. Under paragraph eight, which dealt with physical distancing, I've added the following paragraph. All businesses remaining open during the state of emergency shall, one, enact procedures and practices to ensure that their clients, customers, staff and employees maintain appropriate physical distancing. And two, enact procedures and practices to ensure proper cleaning and sanitizing within the business. It already dealt with, it already dealt with 10 or more people in any location. It's, that said, to the extent feasible is it is in the best interest of the citizens of Henry County not to gather in crowds of 10 or more in any location.
Very good. Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to send this one down. Hopefully you guys can see it on your screen momentarily.
Okay. And while you're sending that, Commissioner Thomas is now, the mic now belongs to you.
Thank you. I'm going back to the same paragraphs that we are discussing. To my knowledge, the cities have not followed what the governor has said. They have set their own standards, to my knowledge. So please send me something so I can read that and see that. That's not true. And also, to my knowledge, Stockbridge has put a ban on all non-essential businesses being closed. Unless they have changed that today, I'm not aware of any changes. They have banned all non-essential businesses and want them closed. I am not in favor of closing our businesses. Let me put that forward. And I'm not in favor that we have to name any specific businesses. What I am in concern about is what you stated, that businesses that remain open must adhere to the 10 or less people in that particular business. We need to encourage them to work by appointments. But we do want them to operate. But that 10 or more people has to include the people that are working as well. So basically, if I have five nail technicians in my building, then I'm only allowed five clients at a time. That's my 10 people. Okay? So we have to be very specific about what we're saying. Yes. Work by appointments, encourage working by appointments. Definitely follow the 10 rules, the 10 people guideline. That should be there. Allow them to operate, but give an example. If you have five technicians in your place of service, that means you can only serve five clients at a time. We can't leave these doors so open that anyone feel like, well, let me decide how this works. And that goes back to my first statement. We cannot be so vague that we are helping people find a way to get around what we're trying to do. Encourage operations, yes. But encourage operations in a very safe manner. That's what we need to do. So I do think we need to make sure in doing these things, when we put down other businesses, talk about how that needs to look and how it needs to operate. Okay? And then they can also, in doing this whole process, then the nail salons know that, let's say it takes one chair, two chairs, empty one chair to get that six feet. They know they're doing that. They know they can only have 10 people total in that area or in their salons to work with, including the people that are working, not excluding them. So I don't have a problem with you taking out the fact you don't want to name the different areas and name the different businesses. That's fine. But you do need to talk about the fact that how they need to operate. The cleaning, I think you should put in there. Talk about that and even have it posted. And it even needs to put in there somewhere along the line. Remember you're placing yourself at risk whenever you decide to have your one-on-one appointments with whoever you choose to have business with.
So hopefully on your screen now, you should see the resolution in its current form.
Okay. Well, let me, can you also email it? Because I'm running my, my cell phone is what I'm using.
I'll email it as well.
I know my emails. I'm reading the resolution as we go forth. Okay?
Yes. So bear with me one second while I email it.
Chair Wood, Commissioner Clemens has her hand up as well.
And when I, you know, then finish with a couple of things I want to talk about through this whole process. I do agree with Commissioner Barn. We need to find what elements, what things can be published that the city and county can agree upon to look like we're unified in this battle. I know we have four cities. There should be, if you all are talking every day, and I'm not a part of that conversation and don't mind being a part of it. But there should be some things that we can put out as city and county that we are unified in and supporting. Something. It can be simple. We support 10 or less people in a business operating for whatever time, whatever, whatever. But we need to find something. If these conversations are happening every day with somebody, then we can put out a unified statement for city and county to show that we're working together. So something needs to be there. And I agree with you, Commissioner Barn. It shows a sense of strength. It shows a sense of unity that we all can echo regardless of where you go. It is the same. One other thing we have not addressed, and that can be done later, Sherri, is what are we doing about our institutions like jails? How they are being handled? What type of practices are being done there? And I didn't have an answer for a constituent that wanted to know, well, how are you managing this in our institutions like a jail? And I didn't have no answer. So later on, you don't have to do it right now. I don't know if that's a part of the agenda. But I do need something that I can respond to in reference to our incarcerations and what we're doing to encourage what needs to take place there.
Absolutely. And I'll definitely get with the sheriff because I know that he does have a plan in place. And I'll share that with the entire board. I will also share with the board what I've been able to pull up because someone referenced the city of Stockbridge in terms of what they adopted this morning. I want the board to be aware that the city of Stockbridge does have a list of businesses that are listed as being exempt from being closed. And so I will share that with the board as well. And then Chair Wood, at some point, I would like to share with the board the email that I just received from Pete Munt Henry. So I don't have to do it now in the middle of this conversation, but would like to share that with the board as well.
Okay. Thank you. And before we go to Commissioner Clemens, I want to say in follow-up to Commissioner Thomas, there will be a phone call later today with the cities and all that you and Commissioner Barn have stated. And I do agree, it would be great to have a unified policy. It will be duly noted in that call. So thank you both. All right. So Patrick, let's go to Commissioner Clemens and then Patrick will come to, will come to our county manager. Then we'll come to you to review the update. So Commissioner, let me confirm, Commissioner Thomas, anything else you'd like to make a statement of?
Can y'all see me?
Okay. Okay. So Commissioner Clemens now has the mic.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was, I was saying that the non-essential businesses, I think, will take care of it instead of listing. And I still agree with what I said. And I thank Commissioner Thomas that, yes, we need to say non-essential. We can say non-essentials and use some of the language you have, Patrick, unless it's general health or wellbeing purposes. So that, I think that covers it. But it's whatever you guys decide. I just don't want to go listing some businesses to shut down and not listing all of, you know, or businesses feel like we're picking on them.
Right. So what I have done is you'll see on the screen, I hope you can see it, we took out that paragraph. Oh, good. We're going to be able to see more than one page. We all took out altogether the paragraph that identified specific businesses. And you see that, oh, there it is, number six, where it's stricken out, that's out altogether. Now, if you look at the bottom page under physical distancing, there we go. Hold the screen right there. So if you look at number, physical distancing, paragraph A applies to everybody everywhere that talks about the physical distancing and encourages citizens of Henry County not to gather in crowds of 10 or more in any location, anywhere at all. And then B provides that all businesses remaining open during the state of emergency shall enact procedures and practices to ensure that their clients, customers, staff and employees maintain appropriate physical distancing. And two, enact procedures, there we go, enact procedures and practices to ensure proper cleaning and sanitizing within the business. So I think what that does is imposes protective measures on every business. And we don't have to identify essential or non-essential. Every business has to enact policies and procedures. Every business has to properly clean and sanitize. And I think that would cover the concerns that I'm hearing without setting a different set of standards or rules on any particular business.
Okay. Thank you. Our county manager had something she wanted to share. And then we'll open it up to the board before we get ready to call for questions. County manager, Ms. Matthews?
Yes. And hold one second, Chair Wood. Let me get back to where you all can see me. So about 10 minutes ago, I received an email from Lily Henson, who is the CEO at Pete Munt Henry. And straight into the point, what she's saying is that Pete Munt's model shows that if a mandatory shelter in place is not enacted to flatten the curve by the end of this week, Pete Munt's healthcare entire system, and this is the entire system, will be at capacity with no beds available by Thursday, April 9. It is our understanding that other health systems models are similar, if not identical. So I'm going to forward this to the board, but I wanted to make you all aware of this correspondence that was just sent over from Lily Henson, who is the CEO of Pete Munt Henry.
So we thank you for that information.
It looks like Commissioner Thomas has her hand waved and Commissioner Barn. Let me unmute both of them.
Okay. We'll begin with Commissioner Thomas. You now have the mic.
In reference to the letter, the notice you just received, I am in direct contact with Pete Munt Henry as of yesterday and this morning. You're absolutely correct. In fact, we're looking at alternative measures and maybe we'll have to have this board help us with that. I do have a building that is available in District Four. It's not owned by the county. It's privately owned. But it was recently closed, which is the mental health facility, which is down the street from Pete Munt Henry, maybe three blocks. 38,000 square feet it was, 50 beds that are available. It is a hospital for mental illness. Okay? But it is a possibility that we can do something there to work with, with possibly an overload of the hospital. We are considering that. They're supposed to get back with me if they want to look at that building. We will have to talk to the private owner. If the private owner is not willing to work with us, then that would mean the commissioners will have to make a decision as to how to encourage the private owner to give us access and use the facility. So just to let you know, the conversations are taking place, Madam Chair. It may go a little bit more in depth. Again, we're hoping the private owner will work with us if need be to allow us to use that facility. And what that cost would be, how that cost would be managed is something a conversation will have to have continuously. So just to let you know, we are in conversation with them.
Commissioner Thomas, is this building within the city limits of Stockbridge or unincorporated Henry?
Now, that's a very good question. I do think it's in the city limits of Stockbridge.
Okay. I just want to make sure because we'll still have to have some type of temporary CO. And I just want to make sure we have the right people a part of that conversation if Pete Munt desires to utilize that facility. Thank you.
Okay. So we are in conversation with that and maybe we'll need some additional help from this board if we can work with this private owner to see what the, what the prospects of making this happen.
Okay. So our county manager, we asked that you share that information with Pete Munt Henry because I'm sure maybe facilities. But again, on some of the calls I've heard, that is also just staffing that would need to support those facilities. So if you'll just submit that recommendation to our CEO at Pete Munt Henry and of course advise, otherwise that would be great. And of course, let me know if we can be involved further in those conversations. Okay?
Absolutely.
Anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
I had another question. Oh, Patrick, I looked at the update that you sent us. And it's well-written for those who understand what your goal is. It is not well-written for the small business owner who don't know how to interpret it. That's my concern. 8B, where you have all businesses remaining open, I think it's well-written for those of us who know what we're trying to do. I think you need to put an example of, remember what this means. Try to clarify it a little bit more simpler for those who have to interpret it. That would be my own concern.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, anything else?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Barn, I think you were next. Your hand raised. You now have the mic.
Yeah, Chair. Thank you. With this resolution.
Uh, with this resolution that we're considering, I, my question is, is how are we going to inform the public? I mean, I know we're going to probably put it in the paper, but are we going, uh, do we have an email for every business in Henry County? Or how are we going to inform the, the, uh, the businesses about this resolution?
So Commissioner Barn, twofold. We do have, if they have a active business license, then we can certainly notify them via our business license department, but that would require us bringing some staff members in to do that. Um, that's ran through Michael Harris, our tax commissioner. I would hope that we could get it out via our social media, um, our Henry Daily Herald, which is our legal organ, and then Melissa does have a direct contact with Channel Two, who does the postings for what's going on within our respective county government. So we can certainly do it that way. Now, if it's the will of the board, um, I can certainly follow up with Mr. Harris and see what we can do. But the only thing that his staff will be able to do is to send something out via mail and you're still going to be a couple of days out. Once we get everything metered into the mail system, we'll already have this ordinance in effect. So a lot of it is going to be word of mouth and it's just doing a really good job of pushing it on our social media pages that we have. Um, Melissa's on this call, so she can definitely update the information and immediately following this call, we'll push it out on our social media, um, avenues that we have in place currently.
Okay, one o- one other question.
I wasn't sure Patrick was.
I, I hear you, yeah.
Okay, okay.
One other question? Have I still got the floor?
You do, sir.
Okay, my other question, um, are we going to have an effective date of immediately? Or are we going to do it noon tomorrow? Are we going to give businesses a little time with, to, to do their scheduling? So we just don't shut them down and, and they start sending people home? I mean, that's, that would probably be the right thing to do, but I'm just wondering, uh, should we put an effective date on this?
Well, it has an effective date of immediately, but we can, that's certainly up to the board to, to, you know, take whatever, make whatever effective date the board would like.
I, I'm just throwing it out there, I thought about it, I just throwing the question out there. I, I don't know the answer.
Right.
Okay, uh, I, I would like to comment on, on that from, uh, Commissioner Barn. I, I do agree that we need to, uh, maybe give some time for communication. Um, I don't know if, um, we need to revise that duration section on Section Nine to say that the resolution take effect on maybe noon tomorrow. Um, you know, but again, we want to make sure that it takes effect as soon as possible. Um, because again, we're trying to, the whole purpose is to, to slow down and prevent any spread of this virus. But, um, if we feel that the businesses that we can communicate to, um, maybe we say take effect immediately. And I don't know how we can, I guess, address the enforcement a little bit later. So if there's some language that you recommend that gives a little grace to get the word out is really what I'm requesting here, County Attorney.
Well, my recommendation is that we leave it like it is simply because we're not going out and, and strong-arming enforcement. That the, we want to immediately start guiding people towards adopting these policies. Look, if we adopted it at, uh, two o'clock on Tuesday and a business doesn't close until, or a business doesn't come into compliance until three-thirty tomorrow, we're not going to be banging on their door, shutting them down or serving subpoenas or anything like that. You know, there's a, there's the practical element of it i- is we're not, we're not going to turn loose the, the soldiers to go out and shut anybody down. But we can certainly adopt a later, a, a later, uh, effective date. And my recommendation as far as addressing enforcement language would be to leave it out until we revisit this ordinance and then we, we can make, we can have some time and devote some energy and concentration to exactly how we want to enforce it. Because even when you begin enforcing it, you certainly want to, to, you know, engage in some progressive enforcement. So I think that may take a little work between myself, county management, probably the police department code enforcement to, to sort of ramp up those enforcement measures.
Okay, all right. Yes, I would agree. Okay, any other comments, um, county manager that you can see?
Yes, I'm, I've gotten a couple of questions from people that are viewing in. Um, specifically the businesses like larger employers, how will they be impacted by the ordinance? Specifically, we have a call center that's here located in the county. We have Home Depot. Um, is there any provision that those facilities will be able to not have any, um, regulations or just be bound by making sure that they are following what the CDC is recommending?
So they would fall under the, the draft that's been distributed. They would fall under that paragraph eight. Uh, let me pull it up real fast. They would fall under paragraph eight, B. That says, "All businesses remaining open shall enact procedures and practices to ensure that their clients, customers, staff and employees maintain appropriate physical distancing and enact procedures and practices to ensure proper cleaning and sanitizing within the business."
Very good, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions or comments from, um, the board or anyone else?
Oh, Commissioner, Commissioner Wood, um, Commissioner Thomas has her hand raised and Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, um, Commissioner Thomas, you now have the floor and then we'll go to Commissioner Wilson.
Oh, one second, let me unmeet you, Commissioner Thomas. And then you're followed, after Commissioner Wilson, we have Commissioner Barn, Sherwood.
Okay.
You're unmet, Commissioner Thomas.
I have a question that's coming from, uh, our churches and congregations. Um, there is a church that wants to be innovative and have outdoor services almost like we used to do, we had the drive-in theater years ago, where he has a stage out front and people sit in their cars and participate in the services. And would like to know if people are in their cars and participating in a service very similar to the drive-in theater of years ago, is that something that could be done without violating our codes? And so I thought, very good question, very innovative. How do we answer that?
The, the answer to that question is yes. So we, we addressed it, we addressed houses of worship separately. Um, I, I felt that we should be very, very, very cautious on interfering with people and their right to worship in the manner they see fit. So our resolution with respect to houses of worship, worship merely encourages them. We ask them to strive for density reduction in all services and to encourage them to use social media or other video outlets to broadcast worship services. They are not in violation if they choose not to do so. Um, but they, they are merely asked to do their best. So, um, you, you know, we have a fundamental right in this, in this country to, to worship as we see fit. And I think it's, I think it would be counterproductive to tell people they can't because for a lot of people, that's all they have right now. So the short answer is yes, absolutely. They can, they can engage in those types of creative worship, um, scenarios and creative worship venues.
Okay, well, thank you. I think that works for them. And like I said, everyone is looking for creative ways to put their groups together. And I thought about the drive-in theater. I said, if you all want to do the drive-in theater in cars, I think that's a good way to do it. And so thank you for confirming that, Patrick. I, I might participate in that worship service myself.
All right, anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, that's it for the moment.
Okay, I think Commissioner Wilson is next and following. Commissioner Wilson, be Commissioner Barn?
Oh, one second. Okay, you're good.
All right, thank you. Uh, going back to the email from Pete Munt Henry, says Pete Munt model shows that if a mandatory shelter in place is not enacted by flatten the curve by the end of this week. So are we going to come back and act on this? Or do we need to act on it today because we're hearing it from Pete Munt Henry? So are we doing all we need to do to flatten the curve? If we aren't, we need to look at that and do it today. Because we don't need to come back Thursday and say, oh, we should have, we should have put, put that in place today. So we need to ask ourselves, are we doing everything we can do to flatten the curve for Henry County? That's all I have.
So very good point. Um, Commissioner Barn, your comments and then I'll make a comment.
Oh, yeah, it's just for information only, um, uh, I talked to Jimmy Carter this morning about the water authority and about cutting people's water off. And they're, they're not cutting anybody's water off. So I just wanted to, uh, let the rest of commissioners know that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Barn. Sherwood? I didn't see any of them with their hands up. So I'll turn it back over to you, but I want to make the board aware that we've received confirmation that there are now thirteen confirmed COVID-19 cases in Henry County.
Okay, um, and my comment before I, um, begin to the next thought is, um, that, uh, that message from, um, our Pete Munt Henry CEO has caused me personally to, um, revisit my thoughts about the non-essential businesses, including all those that we spoke about. I think that, um, all non-essential businesses now should practice, um, we, we should, it, uh, we should actually just encourage them to, to not open, especially if they cannot operate within the six feet and, uh, criterion. Um, so, uh, um, my position about the, um, the non-essentials has now changed based on the feedback from Pete Munt Henry and I'd love to hear thoughts from the other board members as well.
And Sherwood, while you're, I'm going to unmeet all of the board members or at least try to unmeet at some point. Um, but as part of this conversation, I want to remind the board that our building department is at a hundred percent in terms of doing inspections. So when we start talking about non-essential type businesses, um, while we have a county government that has essential services, um, can that be a part of y'all's conversation as well in terms of what the model needs to look like? Um, we have building inspectors that are here working in the building and we have our tax assessor's office that has pretty much half of their staff in the office as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I've made a, made a comment and would love to hear, um, from other commissioners at this time. So if you please, have any comments, please state your, uh, raise your hand, please.
I see Commissioner Wilson followed by Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
Chair, I agree. Uh, I'll go back to my original comments, the non-essential business need to be included, all of them to be immediately shut down. Uh, also, we need to look at, uh, everything we can do today. Uh, I go back to that original statement I made earlier. Everything we can do today to shut the whole county down fourteen days, fourteen days. It's not, if we can stop this in fourteen days and, and I don't want to have to come back in two or three days or next week and say, oh, this didn't work, let's do something different. I'd rather take, I'd rather minimize everything we put in place today instead of have, go back and add to, to, because it's not working. So that's my, that's my thoughts, thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Thomas?
One second. Okay, go for it.
I'm sorry.
You're good now, I had to unmeet her.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, I am small business pro, pro-working, pro-doing everything we can because I'm all into small business and helping them. The question would be shutting down those fourteen or fifteen days that we've been asked to do to make a huge difference. When did those days started? Now, would it be seven additional days? Because that started like seven days ago, I believe, to have the shutdown. Wh- when would we start that to make the curve, um, effective in the county is my question? Would it be now seven days? Because we're into about the seventh, seventh day of when the national fifteen days shutdown started, I think? I'm not sure when we would start it, that's my question. Would it be a new fifteen days? Would we start now and say, shut down fifteen days from now? How would we do it? I don't have a problem trying to curb this thing. I'm just trying to figure out, how would we do it? If someone can help me with that.
Okay, um, the county attorney, um, I know, are you there to help us interpret that?
I am.
My interpretation, it is right now, our, our current resolution or ordinance that we're discussing is to be revisited on April the seventh. Um, so, um, that's kind of the, the, the thought I'm operating under right now. So, but County Attorney, will you clarify?
Well, the way I understand the question is if we, if we were to impose a shelter in place order, how long would it be in effect? And that, that, the answer to that question is, the board would make that determination. Now, to my knowledge, there is presently no statewide or federal, federally mandated shelter in place order. So i- if the, the countdown right now, there's zero days in shelter in place.
Okay.
So.
Sherwood, I see Commissioner Holmes' hand is up, but I did just receive a phone call from the Department of Public Health. Um, I mentioned that we have thirteen confirmed cases. Um, but the Department of Public Health says that all of the private reports or private physicians' reports are coming in and by the end of the day, we could be up to forty-five. And that is just a number that they're saying based on the reports that are coming in. So I'm just trying to share the information with you all as I receive it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, um, or, okay, anything else, uh, Commissioner Thomas?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, you now have the mic.
So now that everybody is starting to change their position, um, what does that mean in terms of enforcement? Uh, because if you don't enforcement, if you don't enforce it, then how can you be sure that people are going to adhere to the, um, to this resolution? Number two, what does that mean for our courts? I mean, are we going to shut down courts?
Well, Patrick, can you speak to courts? Because I don't think legally we can.
Yeah, let me speak to courts. Um, we, we don't really have the authority to shut down the courts. That's going to be left up to the courts. So, um, you know, they're going to have to make that decision on their own. Um, the, the, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of, uh, factors that they're going to need to take into account when they make that determination. Um, I, I would, you know, I would urge you to, um, be cautious right now about adopting a blanket shelter in place order. I am, the reason it might look like I'm distracted is because I am working on a shelter in place order for you to consider. It is, at this moment, to, to answer the questions that will come up, that we all know will come up. It is right now bordering on eight pages, single space. So, uh, you're going to need a minute to do that. You're going to have to define essential businesses. You're going to have to define what shelter in place means. Have to allow exceptions for people to get to and from things. And I, I'm going to need a minute and you're going to need a minute, once it's done, to review it, to make sure you, you fully understand what you're, what you're really doing. So I would urge, at this point, a little caution, a little, maybe tap the brakes a little bit. Because I don't think, you know, it's one forty-five, I don't think you're going to be ready to vote on a meaningful, appropriate shelter in place with appropriate penalties and enforcement provisions, you know, in the next few minutes.
Sherri, I have another question. How, how many people are in Henry County, Henry County's jail? And what are we going to do to address, um, COVID in the, in our, in our, uh, in our jail?
So I'm going to bring Brad up because he handles our public safety group. So stand by one second, Commissioner. Let me, I've got to get six feet from him, so give me a second.
Evening commissioners, good afternoon. I mean, the, um, sheriff and, and Chief Foster have been working diligently to definitely decrease the number of, of occupants in our, in our jail and our jail system, working with the, uh, the court system, police department, the local, uh, city municipalities and their police departments of not taking, um, minimal stuff that might go to the jail on a routine basis to keep the numbers down. And that's why we're limiting contact, they're meeting everybody outside to limit people from going into the jail. They've decreased limitation or, or, or stopped visitation for that. So we are, have the stop measures. It's like a river. When you, either the courts or police, sheriff, if a, a logjam comes in the river, it backs up everything. So they're trying, working together to make sure we have a systematic system in place to, uh, to assure that we get the ones that need to be in jail in jail, the ones that don't need to be in jail, out of jail, and make sure we're doing logical, uh, apprehensions of the ones, um, that we deal with every day. Did I answer your question, Commissioner?
Uh, I guess I'll take that answer.
Thank you. I'm not sure the exact number. I know the sheriff is definitely trying to decrease, has been working about a week and a half now. I don't have the exact number today on our conference call this morning.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Holmes?
Thank you.
Okay, um, anyone else had their hand raised?
Commissioner Barn.
Commissioner Barn.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Barn, you now have the mic.
Oh, one second, let me unmeet him. Okay, he's ready.
Thanks, Chair. Um, I was leaning one.
Thanks, Chair. I was leaning one way, but now I'm leaning another way. This latest information that our county manager has given us, by the end of this day, we could have forty-five. That could be ninety tomorrow, and it could be a hundred and eighty the next day. I, I think we gotta take a bold action on this thing. I think we got to move forward and do the nonessential. I, I didn't wanna go that route, but we gotta get, we gotta get ahead of this thing and, and set the tone for these other counties as well. But I'm concerned about Henry County, and I'm very concerned about the potential of forty-five cases by the end of the day. That just really troubles me. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
I see Commissioner Wilson has his hand up.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Wilson, you now have the mic.
All right, thank you. Can we come back tomorrow and vote on a shelter in place and nonessential businesses? And just let, can we do that at one time? Or Patrick, would you want to do the shelter in place by September? I, I just.
Yeah, you, you're gonna wanna vote on them together, because a shelter in place is going to have an exception for essential businesses. So, you know, having one without the other won't make sense.
Okay.
You know, I, I can have something for you very quickly. I mean, it's, it's almost two o'clock now. I mean, I could have something for you today, but in order to call an emergency meeting, we have to provide twenty-four hours notice. So, you know, y'all can sit here, and I can work under pressure, which I would prefer not to do. Y'all, y'all gonna stare, stare at me staring at the computer screen. Or we could, you know, we could call another meeting for tomorrow afternoon.
Patrick, is it possible for us to go into a recess and then reconvene in like another hour and a half or two hours, if that'll give you enough time, versus us having to? Because even if the clerk had to give twenty-four hour notice, right now it's one fifty, which means we couldn't have another meeting until at least three o'clock tomorrow.
And, and that was the question that I was gonna also impose, but again.
Let me, let me caution you about doing that is, you know, because we're, because of the way in which we're handling the meeting, we're remote. We've got, you know, I can distribute an email draft in, you know, an hour or so. We're, we're gonna be asking this board to take probably the most extreme action any board of commissioners in Henry County has ever taken, without the benefit of focusing and thinking about the resolution. And because of the format we're in the meeting, it's going to be more difficult than normal for me to make revisions in response to comments. I mean, I, I want you to do it right when you do it. I don't wanna, I don't want us to throw a badly put together and a badly thought out shelter in place, or you're essentially shutting the county down. And I think before you take that kind of action, you need both us and the people voting on it, need to really think it through cautiously and carefully, and need time for these questions that are coming up that I can anticipate a lot of questions, but I can't anticipate every question that board members will have. So I, I think it makes sense to, to allow a little reflection.
Okay, can, county attorney, can you do one thing? Can you clarify, again, for those that are listening, and also for the board, the significant, the biggest difference between what this current resolution that has been already modified, how does that compare to the shelter in place, which you've already kind of alluded to what that definition is? We started this whole discussion about what can be done to slow down and prevent the spread of the COVID-19. So can you speak again to what is the major difference between what is now, you've drafted up, and compared to that of the shelter in place, so that makes sure that everybody understands what that means? And I think you've already alluded to it, but I just want you to cover that once more.
Right. So, you know, we talked about the current resolution in a lot of detail. What it basically says is restaurants shall cease indoor dining options. And the rest of that ordinance, the rest of that resolution simply encourages people to follow appropriate social distancing or physical distancing practices. The first sentence in a shelter in place order will say something like this. All individuals currently living within Henry County shall shelter at their place of residence. That means you can't leave your house. That is a drastic difference. Now, that's one sentence. There will be three pages of exceptions that allow people to go to and from work, allow people to, you know, take care of their medical needs and buy groceries. But basically, you know, think back to when you were a teenager and you got put on restriction. We're putting the whole county on restriction. We're grounding the whole county. We're saying, you, you have to stay in your house unless you need to leave your house. You can go to work, you can go to school, you can go get groceries, but that's it. So there, there will be a lot of exceptions. We're basically telling every business in the county to close its doors, shutter its operations, unless they are essential businesses. We're going to define as best we can what essential businesses are. But you're, you're taking a step from, you're taking a step from preventative measures and keeping the county open to, let's all shut our doors and stay home unless we fall within an exception. So it's a massive difference in the, in the obligations we're imposing upon the, both the citizens and the business community. And, 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 you know, y'all are gonna have to make the determination about whether it's appropriate or not. That's what, that's, you know, that's what you are elected to do. But it is a, it's a massive difference between the current resolution and a shelter in place order.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you for that. And then again, if you can show the resolution again. Again, I know that the biggest thing that we need to discuss is, well, I guess at this point in time, if you'll put the current resolution up there, I think the current resolution that you just presented still did have a clause in there for nonessentials. But if you'll clarify again where we are with the nonessentials on the current.
Right, I'll wait on IT to post it. I will read again the, the section that applied to all businesses. And there it is. So, all businesses remaining open during the state of emergency shall enact procedures and practices to ensure that their clients, there's a typo, customers, I'll fix that. Staff and employees maintain appropriate physical distancing and enact procedures and practices to ensure proper cleaning and sanitizing within the business. That's what, that's the current draft.
Chair Wood, Commissioner Thomas has her hand up.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
I'm going back to what Commissioner Wilson has stated. The question was, when we look back at ourselves, are we doing all we can do to help curb the spread of this virus? And that was a big question. Not, not to make people happy. We're going to be damaged financially either way, but are we doing all we can do? So my original question was, if we did a shelter in place, what would be the dates and the timelines to do it? Would we start at this point ago, seven days out? Would we start at this point ago to April the seventh? Would we, would we start with the ones that's being encouraged, not mandated, but it's being encouraged around the state and the cap, the state and the nation? I am not opposed of a shelter in place. What I want to know is, how can we do it? When should we implement it? How long should we put it in place? So we can say we did something to curb the spread of this virus. And I don't hear that. I even sent to Patrick just a few minutes ago an email that said that if indeed we decide to go with the items that he encouraged us to do on number eight, eight B, then it should be even more detailed, like saying, we encourage appointments only, okay? Rotation of services. We need to put something in place. Post your practices to curb the COVID-19 virus. What health practices are you there having posted in a large poster? Something to say that we're doing something beyond the statement that he has there. So I can support a shelter in place. I can support it being to April the seventh, which is our next meeting, to see what that does. What I'm saying to you, our hospitals already stated they need assistance. What assistance can the county give? A shelter in place can be done. What assistance can the county give? Closing nonessential businesses for fifteen days or an additional seven days or to April the seventh? What can we do? We can encourage our officers to ride around to make sure it's taking place. Those are things the county can do, and those are things we can talk to our cities, talking about, when we talk to them to say, you can help us make this happen. It doesn't feel good, but those are things the county can do to help curb this virus, and we need to consider it. And I can support those things.
Okay, any, any other thoughts, Commissioner Thomas? Okay.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I wanna speak, and then I wanna come to Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Wilson. In response to the question, or are we doing all that we can at this moment? First of all, I say that we should add back a statement regarding nonessential businesses that cannot practice the six feet distancing is, is very important, because that's part of the mitigation and containment measures. So I would say that we need to add that, a statement back to that. I would also say that I do respect the county attorney's position that when we do the shelter in place, that we need to make sure that we have had the time to, to talk through that. And I also agree with statements that have already been made by Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Barham, that this would need to be something that also is discussed with the cities, because you can't, I don't think that if the county does a shelter in place, and yet we've not yet gotten that collaborative agreement with the cities. I, I think, again, we, we've just got to do what we need to do. We need to do it soon. So I, I'm suggesting that we add back in a statement regarding nonessential, those nonessential businesses that in their services cannot practice the six feet, six feet distancing. They should not be open. And I do agree that we need to continue the conversation about the shelter in place and involve the cities as well. So those are my thoughts. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, you now have the mic.
Thank you. So it looks like we went from nine to forty-five by the end of the day. That's a tremendous amount of increase, and by tomorrow it could go up another to three hundred percent. We don't know that. But what we're not talking about is how we're gonna protect our first responders, because the more people that are exposed to this, the more people infected, they have to run these calls, and they're infected. And so with that being said, what we don't wanna do is, what, first of all, we need to put all these things in place, because if we're not careful, and if we don't do everything we can do, we're gonna run out of first responders. A hospital is gonna be slap full. Our first responders are not gonna be, we're not gonna have, they're gonna be infected. They're gonna be self quarantined. So we need to do everything we can do today. If we have to take an hour recess, I'm, I'm all for it. We can, so we have to consider everybody that's involved in this, protecting our citizen and people that help protect our citizens. That's all I have.
Okay, well, we thank you. And again, I think the points have been made. We're now gonna, I'm gonna call question at this moment, and open the floor now for a motion.
Chair Wood, give me one second to unmeet all of the mics.
And if anyone wants to make a motion there, raise their hand, and then we'll acknowledge it from that standpoint. Okay, we've got, I see Commissioner Wilson. Is that correct? I can't see, so Ms. Matthews, will you call?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Y'all hear me, right?
What is the?
Commissioner Clemens, y'all hear me, right?
All right.
No, just that Commissioner Clemens, you were muted. We didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm here. All is well.
What's the?
Chair Wood, Commissioner Holmes is asking, what is the motion?
Yeah, okay, so Commissioner Wilson raised his hand for the motion. So Commissioner Wilson.
I would like to make, make a motion to take a hour recess and let Patrick come back with a, with a different, with a different type of resolution for, with, with, with the nonessential business and the shelter involved with that as well.
Okay.
Commissioner, is that gonna be enforced? What's that, sir?
Well.
Are we trying to put, they trying to?
Wait, wait a minute. So let's, let's carry forward. We have a motion. Is there a second? And then we'll open it up for discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So there's a second by Commissioner Thomas.
There we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Holmes had a question. Could someone please respond to that?
Yeah, so, so when we come back, are we, are we gonna be voting on the shelter in place with enforcement? Or what are we, what are we gonna be voting on?
Hold on, Patrick. I've gotta unmute you.
Okay, am I unmuted?
You are.
All right. I will prepare a resolution that imposes a shelter in place order and has enforcement capabilities. Now, it will actually be a, it will be drafted as an ordinance as opposed to a resolution, but that doesn't really matter to y'all. So I will have that available for you to vote on and revise and make changes as y'all see fit.
One more question. With regards to the enforcement, can you spell out what that looks like?
Well, I don't know yet. I haven't drafted it, but I'll work, I will, I, I will work on something. This is brand new. Y'all just brought it up, you know, fifteen minutes ago. So I'll, I'll look at how other jurisdictions are doing it and include some enforcement mechanism.
Chair Wood, Commissioner Barham has his hand raised.
Okay, so Commissioner Holmes, any other questions?
Well, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Barham, you're next, and then I'd like to make a comment.
Well, I certainly wanna be part of this, and I wanna, I was to do the right thing. The problem I have is I've got to take my wife to a doctor appointment at three. We changed the appointment to get her to, we rescheduled, we were supposed to go at one, but I told them we couldn't come. And so I rescheduled her doctor's appointment for three, and, and I won't probably be back to four thirty, unless I can find some other means for her to get to the doctor's appointment. But I was wondering if, if everybody would be receptive and maybe give Patrick a little more time that we could put this off to four thirty.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Barham. My, my statement still is, I, I do agree that we need to have more conversation regarding this shelter in place. We also need to engage the, the cities as well. So my thoughts are, let's enact upon what we need to do right now. Give the county attorney an opportunity to draft something. And again, our county manager or county attorney work with the cities, because again, we've got to think through this on not only how this is gonna impact the unincorporated, but how it will impact the cities. We need to engage their feedback, and as Commissioner Holmes has already stated, we've got to think clearly about enforcement. So if we need to take action today, we can take that. And again, if we need to, if we need to also come back within a quick period of time, that is my recommendation. And again, these are matters, the rate that Henry County may be experiencing this COVID is not just only to Henry County, it's regarding the state of Georgia. So again, that is something else we got to think about as well regarding shelters in place. So those are my thoughts. Any other questions or comments from the board before we take a vote on the motion that's before us?
I just wanna let y'all know, I can have you a resolu, an ordinance imposing the shelter in place. It's two o'clock now. I can have you one by three. I don't, I don't want you to, I don't want me to hold you up in whatever actions you need to take, but I, I can have one put together, available for you to review and vote on by three.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Chair Wood, Commissioner Clemens has her hand up, and then followed by Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, you now have the mic.
Yeah, now, when we're talking about shelter in place, that's a whole lot different than what we were talking about at first. And so I'm not, even the governor didn't do a full shelter in place. I don't know what the heck we're talking about. We've got nine cases, not nineteen cases, which is a much better number. But I think what we were deciding at first was with the restaurants and all of that, was, was a good way to start, to give us two weeks to see how things go. We're going to the extreme, and I don't think.
We're going to the extreme, and I don't think that we should be doing the extreme now. So I don't care what time y'all come back, I'm not coming back for a shelter in place at this time. What we had was basic, it took care of the restaurants, you know, and it didn't even shut them down. It just said, go to curbside service. It said, you know, need to be aware of where you are, six feet. Now we're going to an extreme, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not able to support that, even the state didn't even do that. So I don't care what time y'all coming back, I'm, I don't, I won't be able to do the shelter in place.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clemmons, any additional comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
So when he comes back, not just have a resolution, we need to know what other counties are doing, other cities are doing, so we can do some comparative research as to what is taking place around us to determine if this is what we need to do. My goal with this supplement, that motion, was to give us some time to think, not just do something, but have an opportunity to think about what we're doing, have an opportunity for him to do his homework, get back to us, and then we can determine what Henry County does need to do.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions?
Chair Wood, Commissioner Holmes has his hand up.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, one last thing. You know, I know that this is a pandemic and, you know, everybody is concerned about COVID-19. But I just want to caution, I'm a little nervous about telling a business to totally shut down their, their business, their livelihood, their income. I'm concerned about the economy. I do believe that we need to put something in place, but I think we should err on the side of personal responsibility. And that's where I am with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner Holmes?
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so I think that should cover everyone, so we've had a motion and a second. Those that are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
So Chair Wood, I see Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Thomas. Those are the only two that I see.
Okay, and those that are opposed, please raise your hand.
What's the resolution again?
We're on the motion that was made, and again, let's, county clerk, can someone clarify what we are, what we just voted on that motion?
Hold on, Stephanie, okay.
Commissioner Wilson made a motion to table and take an hour of recess, and for the county attorney to come back with shelter in place and non-essential resolutions, and it was seconded by Thomas.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And so again, on that motion, we had Commissioner Wilson, and, okay, can you clarify who voted in favor of that? And then we'll take the vote of those up against to make it official for the record.
In favor was Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Thomas. Opposed was Chair Wood and Clemmons, and I don't know that I heard the.
The polls.
Okay, can we take those that are in opposition, please raise your hand again for the record.
We have Chair Wood, Commissioner Barm, Commissioner Holmes, and Commissioner Clemmons.
Okay, so that motion failed. I'm now opening the floor now for another motion. Okay, I'll make that motion. I recommend that we accept the modifications that the county attorney has posed. I do request that in that, that modification, that we add the fact that non-essential businesses that cannot practice the six feet distancing when providing services do close until the end of this expiration of this order. So that's the motion that I'd make at this time.
Hold on, I see Commissioner Clemmons with her hand up. I believe she is, I can't unmute you, Commissioner, hold on. She is doing a second, yes, she is seconding your motion, Chair Wood.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions from commissioners?
I don't see any commissioners with their hands up.
Okay, all in favor?
I see you, Chair Wood, Commissioner Barm, Commissioner Clemmons, and Commissioner Holmes as four.
Okay, all opposed?
I see Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, thank you. And for the record, our county clerk, will you confirm that vote, that motion and that vote?
Chair Wood made a motion to recommend that we accept the modification from the county attorney in the resolution that was presented. This part, I'm sorry, it went kind of fast, to add non-essential businesses that keep a six foot, that can keep a six, I'm sorry.
Let me read that, let me read that how it will read.
Sorry, okay.
All non-essential businesses, now this will be at the end of 8B. It will be a new 8C, and it will say, all non-essential businesses which are unable to operate without ensuring that their clients, customers, staff, and employees maintain physical distance of at least six feet should close during this state of emergency.
Okay, so thank you for the clarification, continue on county clerk.
And Commissioner Thomas seconded that motion in favor. Chair Wood, Commissioners Barm, Clemmons, and Holmes voted in favor. Opposed, Commissioners Wilson and Thomas motion.
Well, there's a clarification, the correction is that Commissioner Clemmons seconded the motion.
That is correct.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, so will you read again what you have for record?
Chair Wood made the motion, read into the record, Commissioner Clemmons seconded in favor, Chair Wood, Barm, Clemmons, and Holmes, opposed, Wilson and Thomas.
Okay, thank you, so the motion carries. Okay, so at this point in time, that concludes our discussion at this time regarding the resolution to establish emergency protective orders to control the spread of COVID-19. So at this time, are there any other comments for the greater good of the, of the, of the board or for the meeting before we adjourn?
So Chair, before you go, I will continue work on a shelter in place ordinance, and I will distribute it to everybody after management has a chance to review it. In the event it's something this board decides it wants to do.
There's some background noise, so someone can please mute, I've got one final comment I'd like to make. I do want to again, thank all of the citizens and business who have done what has been requested from the moment that we've heard about this COVID-19 and social distancing yourselves. We thank you for that. We also want to pay a special commendation again to our EMA Director, Mr. Ash and his team, along with the county management and their team, and all of those who've been working in public safety, to again, make sure that we're operating through our emergency management procedures well. We do want to say thank you as well to our technology and our communications team that is continuing to help us all to stay informed as best as we can. And for all of the other stakeholders that are out there with the hospital, the Department of Health, we do want to again, just say thank you, and we've got more work to do. And again, just want to appreciate the teamwork that is coming forth. And again, I will follow back up with you all to share much from this call with the Board of Commissioners and other conversations with the cities as well as we continue further discussions about a potential shelter in place consideration. So I see, but those are my comments, I think I see Commissioner Wilson. And if there's anyone else, county manager, if you can let us know before we adjourn the meeting, that would be great.
Yes, Chair Wood, I'm going to unmute Commissioner Wilson, but I did want to, just for clarification on the motion, is the effective date of this resolution today?
Yes.
Thank you. I've unmuted Commissioner.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to encourage all the board members to go back and review the email from P. Mark Henry. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions from any of the board members? I can't see, so county manager, can you clarify?
Commissioner Thomas has her hand held.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
No, I'm well, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm county manager, you have any other comments or either from you or emergency management director?
I'm looking at Mr. Ash, it doesn't appear that he has any comments. Chair Wood, we will again, reevaluate our county operations. As I mentioned, we do still have a number of building inspections that are going on. While some may be essential, they are not ones that we have closings on, and so we're still trying to handle that. But we may be in the coming days making a decision to ask that some of these inspections be done by a third party. And we certainly want to make sure that we are protecting our county employees as well and making sure that they are maintaining that social distancing as recommended by the CDC and the Department of Public Health. At this time, I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, and we do ask you, county manager, to please keep the Board of Commissioners abreast, especially if we have any indications that we have any individuals or businesses that are not following these orders, because that would definitely trigger again, an opportunity for the board to come together to address these issues. The whole purpose today again, was to be in a preventative mode, to do the best that we can at this time, and to again, look at all that we need to look at, and I appreciate the board's dialogue today. But again, we definitely would like to get some reports on how things are progressing, especially if we hear of any issues where there are code violations, we would definitely need to bring this board back together.
Chair Wood, I see a hand being raised from Commissioner Holmes.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, last comment. Is there a possibility, Sherri, that we can put our code enforcement on high, high alert to, to, you know, survey, surveillance the county to ensure that, that the recommendations from this Board of Commissioners are being followed by, by local businesses?
Absolutely, the chief is actually here with us, and he is nodding, saying, yes, sir, they're, they're definitely going to make sure it's taken care of.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes, any other thoughts or questions from the board before we accept a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Thomas, is your hand up?
No.
Okay, then I see no hands raised, Chair Wood.
Okay, so at this point, we will now accept a motion to adjourn this special call meeting.
You have a motion from Commissioner Clemmons, and it looks like a second from Commissioner Barm.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Clemmons and a second from Commissioner Barm. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor to adjourn, please raise your hand.
All hands raised.
Okay, thank you all, and thank you for those of you who were tuning in as well. Thank you.
Thank you.